We'll call it the order, the Louisville Town Council for our November meeting, 2013. I'm Dan Q, the Mayor of Louisville, and welcome all that are in attendance tonight at tonight's meeting. And also, I'd like to mention that our meeting is being recorded for playback on government channel six, time one of channel six. So we also welcome those Louisville citizens that are watching and participating with that method. We, as is our custom, we do our road call interviews in each of our council members and our town staff to you. So at this time, on my immediate right, is our Mayor pro town Sandra Mark, followed by Councilman Ed Smith and Councilman Ted Franklin. To my left is Councilman Robert Green, followed by Councilman Tom Lawson and Councilman Jeff Sinker. We do have our town staff in attendance tonight, led by our town manager Nate Perkins, our town attorney Bo Half, our town clerk, Mr. George Walker, our assistant town manager and finance director Kathy Bruce. On the recording device, camera, is Lynn Hall, who is our public information officer and our events coordinator. And we do have members of the press that are with us tonight also, Elizabeth Cruz and Lisa O'Donnell. So welcome to you, thank you for being in attendance tonight also. Council, we have an agenda before you. I should mention to our audience that there are copies of tonight's agenda on the table at the rear. If you didn't get one if you came in, you're certainly welcome to get up and to get one at this point in time. If you'd like to have one follow along for tonight's agenda. Council, we have the agenda for tonight. I think it says was adopted at our briefing this past week. I don't think there was any new additions today or the last two days. If so...
Just those two contracts that I emailed that you know yesterday.
And those contracts were what again?
What is for snow and ice removal, and the others for holiday decorations.
Very good. Yes, thank you. I think that was sent to you, the email yesterday. You need any time to look over tonight's agenda before I ask for a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt.
Second. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, black sign. Okay, we do have an agenda that we will follow and we'll ask our town manager to lead us through the consent agenda.
This evening, the consent agenda consists of four items. First is resolution 2013040 for the acceptance and approval of monthly financials for September 2013. Next is the approval of council briefing and action minutes from October 3rd, 2013. Approval of council regular meeting minutes from October 10th, 2013. And lastly, the approval of council special meeting minutes from October 22nd, 2013.
Council, I think we covered all of the four items that are on the consent agenda at our briefing session. Do you have any questions of the manager this time?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Second. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, the black sign. Consent agenda passes, we'll go to the next item.
Okay. The next section is presentations, introductions, and annual proclamations. Under presentations, we do have audit report presentation for Ms. Pam Orrell, who is with us from Gibson and Company.
Welcome Pam, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Pam Orrell, and I'm the manager with Gibson and Company. I'd like to thank you for allowing us once again to serve as your auditor. We have completed the audit of the financial statements of the town of Louisville for the year ending June 30th, 2013. The audit report has been submitted to the local government commission and they have approved it. Kathy has included it in her paper, and I believe she's about to finish the audit pretty soon, so it should be available for your review shortly. In the meantime tonight, I'm going to share with you briefly the highlights of the town's fiscal year and the results of our audit. In summary, our audit opinion reads as follows. We have audited the financial statements of the town of Louisville as of June 30th, 2013, and for the year then ended in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States, and also according to government auditing standards. In our opinion, based on our audit, we do find that the financial statements do present fairly in all material respects, the financial position, and the results of operations of the town of Louisville. This is an unqualified opinion, which is the cleanest opinion that we can issue. During the audit, we found that the books and records were very complete and in good order, and all the accounts were properly reconciled. The financial statements also showed that there were no budget violations this year. All expenditures came in under budget for all the funds, including the general fund. Now for some of the financial highlights of the year. The town as a whole had total assets at the end of the year of $14,776,000. This was comprised mostly of cash of $7,269,000 and capital assets net of depreciation of $7,195,000. You had total liabilities of $2,214,000, which did include long-term debt owed to the bank of $1,960,000. So the town ended the year with a net position, which is your assets minus your liabilities, of $12,562,000. The net position of the town did increase this year by $865,000. I believe you can attribute this to the good job that the finance department did in monitoring and controlling expenditures this year. Now I'd like to just focus on the general fund. At June 30th, the general fund had total assets of approximately $5,770,000. This included cash of $5,460,000. The liabilities in the general fund were $255,000. When you subtract these liabilities from the assets, you arrive at a total fund balance in the general fund of $5,515,000. Of that amount, the amount of unassigned or unrestricted fund balance at the end of the year was $4,069,000. The general fund balance did increase this year by approximately $774,000. The significant increase this year is due to less money being transferred from the general fund to the various capital reserve funds and the capital project funds than had been transferred in the past, and also significantly less money was spent on road paving this year. That does conclude my comments on the town's financial statements. Based on this report, the town of Louisville had a very strong balance sheet at the end of the year, and it appears to be in excellent financial shape after coming off a very good year. Are there any questions?
First of all, thank you very much for those kind remarks, and certainly for the work that you did on the audit.
Thank you.
And we're extremely pleased that there were no findings of any consequences. So, Council, do you, any of you have any questions?
I think we should probably keep Kathy Bruce for a second.
I think we'll take that under consideration.
Let me know if you need a motion.
We do need a motion to accept the audit.
So who?
Second. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, the black sign. Council, thank you so much.
Thank you.
The audit is approved and accepted. And certainly I'd like to add my thanks to our finance officer for all the hard work. She does keep us straight, it makes our job much easier, and certainly we rest easier at night, knowing that we have you think and that you're watching over the town's business, the town's plans.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item?
Okay, the next is, this is a presentation, we have a presentation of a certificate of appreciation for Mr. Scott Frye, for time that he has served to the town of Louisville and the zoning board adjustment secretary.
As the manager stated, I don't know if you said 11 years?
I did not say that.
As secretary of our zoning board adjustment, from your position on the city-county inspection department, we appreciate your service to Louisville. Understand that you're retiring from your day job, and so, but how many years of service?
29 years and two months.
And we've had 11 of those, well that's good, great. Certainly our appreciation goes to you Scott for what you've done and your service to Louisville in the past, being secretary of the zoning board adjustment. And the stick of appreciation is presented to Scott Frye in recognition of 11 years of meritorious service as secretary of the zoning board of adjustment from the town of Louisville, by giving him an undermined signature and seal this November 14th, 2013.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate very much.
I appreciate it very much.
Well, I'm hoping so, and certainly we wish you the very best in your retirement, and don't forget us.
All right.
Thank you. We have, I think, Mr. Franklin, is it him? Just like to introduce Marty, is Scott's replacement, and we are new secretary. Thank you, we're looking forward to working with you, and you've got the precedent set.
Big chief.
Yes, big chief, for sure, but we know you're into it, and thank you so much. Mate, did you...
We're, we're, we're this way from...
Yeah.
We have no disapproval introductions as well, and we have no proclamations this evening. And then next is public forum.
Just remind our audience that we do have two opportunities during each one of our monthly meetings for any citizen to come forward and address the council on any issue. It could be something that is on tonight's agenda, or it could be something that's not on the agenda, but yet is very important to you as an individual, or hopefully to the town also. So what we do, we ask that if you want to address council at this time during this first public forum, that you come forward to the podium, speak into the microphones, that you state your name and your address, and we do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. This is information that you are imparting to the council. We're here to listen and take it in. We want to engage in discussion or conversation, but it is certainly an excellent method to bring something to the town's attention, and then it will be duly and diligently investigated and worked on. So, do we have anyone, no one signing up at this point, town? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address council on any matter? Okay, we do have a number of public hearings tonight, so there'd be an opportunity on that particular of the issue that is at that point in time that you can address council at that point. Okay, just remind you that we do have forums available at the rear of the chambers, that you can submit your comments in a written format if you so choose. With that, we'll close the first public forum and go on to the next item.
Okay. The next section is purchases and contracts. We have two considerations this evening. The first is resolution 2013043, awarding a contract for snow and ice removal to Seth Cheek Grading of Pop Town, North Carolina, in an amount of $165 per hour per truck, and authorizing the execution of the contract by the town secretary.
My understanding is that this is just the formality of this particular contract, that it has been approved, well it was discussed and approved during our budget process, so we've got resolution 2013043 for the snow and ice removal contract. What's the pleasure of council?
Questions?
Any comments or questions?
That's the question, please, to Kathy. If the state makes the call to ramp up, if you will, is there a limited number of hours that they can bill even if the truck does not hit the road? Is there like a standard two-hour per truck charge, or three-hour per truck charge, or something?
I don't know what the limit is. I do know that whatever hours they need to load and load, that's what they deal for. It's not many, it's usually like two or so, but I don't know the limit. And now, so if they go out for some of their training sessions, they may be a part of that, but I did see that Seth yesterday, and he had those in training, and he's not, as far as I know, he's not feeling very well.
I guess the reason I'm asking this question is because, you know, last year, my recollection, I assume most folks' recollection around here is we had no appreciable snow during the year, but yet we had no many charges, just a ballpark figure, I'm sure you've got that handy.
Last year, we paid Seth $50,740.
Yeah. And I just, again, get back to, you know, I know there's the mobilization effort, and we make the call on that, the North Carolina DOT does that, and I just wondered if maybe if we had negotiated another contract, that some limits could be put in there, that would say it's X number of hours per truck, if he was going to put five trucks on the road, and then limit those charges to $50,000 for no more snow than we had last year, is just, you know, seems like a lot of waste of money.
I understand totally. I think you talk about this every year, but we will make that notation as far as in the negotiation of the next contract.
Yeah, I fully recognize that if we did not hire him as a contractor, he could offer his services to the DOT or someone else, so we're sort of hemmed in the corner, and the only question I have is, you know, what does the state figure per truck ramped up if you will, or mobilization?
Right, it's my understanding from our public works director that Seth's charges are in relation to what the OT would.
Good.
Got you. All questions?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, the snow and ice removal is approved. Go to the, to the next item.
The next item is resolution 2013044, awarding contract for holiday decorations to Elite Landscape Service and Nursery Incorporated of Pop Town, in an amount not to exceed $11,336, and authorizing the execution of the contract by the town.
Okay. This is another item that has been discussed, and I think it's with the same contractor, and actually the same amount in years past, so what's the pleasure of council on this particular contract?
Motion to approve.
Sorry. We have any discussion? Well, the season is upon us, and we'll be seeing the decorations, holiday decorations put up around the town in the very near future. All in favor of resolution 2013044, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, the resolution passes, and now we have a contract for the holiday season.
Okay, the next section is board and committee appointments. There are none for consideration this evening. Home business, we made, we had a presentation for Mr. Mark Person, a team month together, and that was about a participation in a one-day, I guess workshop here in Louisville, through a grant that has been entered group a month ago. I sent out some information that was directly related to questions that came after the briefing this afternoon, and I guess at this point, does council have an indication on how to report the city?
I think from the information that you did make available to council, and it did resolve, I think, the questions that we had at the presentation at our briefing session, one of the things that was disclosed is we're one of four municipalities in the country, not just in the state of North Carolina, but we've been chosen as one of the four, that this particular study is going to incorporate. And I think that in itself is really recognition and a compliment to our town, and certainly for our planning background, I think is what they were really interested in, and the reason for choosing Louisville. So, this would be something that would be a one-day work session, I suppose, you could call it, that would probably be held sometime early in 2014, that we would be inviting citizen representation, as well as business, and I guess government also, to participate in this, if council decides to go follow with it. I don't think there's actually any expense whatsoever to the town, as far as that goes, but it's something that would, I think, bring attention and notoriety to Louisville. I think they're asking us for input and information, basically to reflect the success that we've seen as a town for the last 20, 20 something years. So, I would recommend to council that we proceed with this. Any discussions or comments from councilmen?
I think what you said, there's no commitment of financial on our side, so I don't see where there's anything to move us here.
Do we need a formal action on this, Mr. Attorney, or do we just need to...
We say to...
Shaking of heads?
Make a motion that we participate in this program in the city.
Okay, well, I will salute that as stated by our attorney. We'll have a second.
Sure.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay. We will proceed then and contact the pertinent parties, and we'll get that in motion. Next item?
Next item brings us to public hearings. And we do have quite a few public hearings this evening, four in all. The first is continuation of a public hearing that started last month on the 10th of October, and that was for amendments to landscaping standards. We already had that presentation last month, and it brings us to, again, the public hearing being continued at this point.
We need to formally make statement as to continuing the public hearing, or is the manager taking care of that for us?
He's taking care of that, it's on the agenda, so okay.
Very good. I did fail to introduce our town planner earlier, sorry Marty, I didn't mean to overlook you. Mr. Marty Meyer, our town planner, is with us tonight also, and he will actually be presenting staff presentations of all of the remaining public hearings. I don't think, do you have anything that you'd like to add at this time, for this particular, where we stand in this hearing?
Only that there were a number of amendments that were being suggested, that were mentioned at the last public hearing, some of them came from the builders association, the builders, and I just want to bring your attention that all of those amendments have been incorporated into the documents we had in front of the decision, so it's, as far as town knows, it's a complete.
This is the continuation of the public hearing on the landscaping standards. Any questions of the planner, or any of the staff, from members of council at this time, before we go into the public hearing, or continue the public hearing, excuse me?
Yeah, I do. Section 8, Marty, it comes back to this whole maintenance thing, it almost reads to me, unless I'm thinking I'm missing something, that once these plants are put in, that the owner's responsible for them, but it's like open-ended. It's like we're going to manage his landscape and make sure he's keeping it up forever. And then what if he wants to make a change to it, you know? At what point are we out of it? Maybe I'm missing something, but it just seems to me that we become the landscape man Section 8G, number three as well, both of them seem to be dealing with that.
Is paragraph three primarily your paragraph of concern, because the paragraphs one and two that precede it just simply establish a standard to which they should maintain to, and then, under maintenance of plantings, what, how that is normally held or handled is after a project has gone in and the landscaping plan has been approved, and the zoning inspection performed by a member of the city-county inspection staff or town staff, and a CO authorized for occupancy of the building, then if there were dead or missing plants to come about as a consequence of drought, or, you know, some extreme that they couldn't handle, inevitably what happens is we do most of what we do by complaint. If we have a complaint by a citizen or even a staff person noticing that those plants have become diseased, or if they've died and it's become unsightly, the aesthetic has changed, then we would simply then make the appropriate persons down at city-county aware of it, then they would send a notice to the property owner to, in effect, replace those plants. If the time period, say it's the middle of summer, and the plants have died because it has been extremely hot, and they were not properly watered, they didn't have enough there to allow them to survive, then if I'm not mistaken, I think the inspections officer has the ability to hold off on any violation, or any notice, or penalty.
Well, I guess my question before is this, it seems that once you sit in a landscape plan, you're tied to that plan forever.
Pretty much.
Well, I don't know that that's a good idea, quite honestly. I mean, plants mature, they get too big, you gotta take some out, things change, you know, I know, you know, just about every one of these buildings down here that have been built in the last few years, there's stuff that has changed on their landscape just because. So I just wonder, should there be something in there that says, you know?
Like after a period of time?
Yeah, I mean, after one, you know, after one year of CO, you know, I mean, because, you know, you could come, somebody could come back 20 years later because it ticked off at their neighbor and say, hey, you know what? I found this. And it just, it's, you know, it sounds crazy, but...
I understand.
What point do we say, you've complied, we're done?
I understand. And just let me add to my previous comment, you know, you're right, I think there is a commitment that's implied in this statute, and it was in the previous UDO that way as well. We have not had a problem, honestly, you know, we've had, as I described, you know, we've had several summers of extreme drought around here, and not all of our plantings are long sheltered rather than other places, are irrigated, some are, some aren't, and we lose plants. And I guess it's just part of the contractual, whoever he's working with doing his, I'm talking about the property owner, whoever they're working with, to have them maintain their property. We've had good luck with them going in and replacing plants.
I guess maintaining their property is one thing, obviously someone grows a hayfield here in Little Town, we're going to have a problem with that, but I guess my point is, is the landscape plan is, you know, when you get a CO, you're done with building inspections, you're done with compliance. CO says, I have complied, and it seems like what we're saying is, well, you have it, you have it.
Well, I don't want that.
You're never going to completely comply, we're going to have this hanging here so we can, you know what I mean? It just seems to me, in all fairness, if someone comes and invests a tremendous amount of money into the town to do something like this, there should be a point, maybe six months after the CO, or one year after the CO, or three years after the CO, we've got, we've complied, you know?
And one year seems appropriate on a couple of levels to me, because typically if a landscaper or a contractor puts in landscaping on behalf of a particular project, typically they guarantee it for a year.
That's right.
So if you lose a plant, you know, you can come back and replace it free of charge. So if you lose a plant, you know, you can come back and replace it free of charge. I don't agree with that.
But on the other hand, you know, there are lots of site plan conditions that we require that continue to be maintained, so for example, if you've got a dumpster, dumpster screening, you can't, as soon as you get your CO, you can't take that down.
Right, but the way this is, the way this is set up, if a guy's got a holly tree on the corner of his property and it dies, or it's no longer feasible to be there because it gets so big, and he cuts it down and puts in, you know?
Craig Myrtle.
Craig Myrtle.
Instead.
Technically, someone would go, hey, wait a minute, you need to resubmit your landscape plan, because that's not what's on the plan. And it just seems to me that that's, that's the door that gets opened.
And I love there are some de minimis kinds of things, like, that's a great example of something where somebody puts in a tree that would, had it been submitted, would have been acceptable. Now, if somebody substitutes a tree that would not have been accepted had it initially been proposed, then that's a different story. So, there's always going to be, as we're all aware, especially with zoning kinds of issues, there's always going to be some slivage, there's always going to be some room for movement, and at some point, a decision has to be made as to whether this, this far but no farther, and you're going to have to comply. So, but otherwise, it is, it is pretty much in perpetuity that you're going to maintain the plantings that you, that you've installed.
There's going to be some subjective calls, I think, with this. For me, I would prefer that, in the subjective area, that the town have the upper hand on that. An example I would make is, I worked near a bank, and they had a buffer yard planted there, and it had some nice trees in it. Over the years, three or four of those trees, because storms threw open, they brought in a tree company, cut them off and left the stumps there. And the stumps looked terrible, but nobody was in a position to tell them to say, hey, wait a minute, this is supposed to be a screened area here, and now that this is out. So, I think, well, we're both saying, either the developer or the owner of the property's going to make that call, or the town is going to make that call, and commercial applications especially, I don't know. What? Couldn't you at that point say, you know, at that point, I think the town, even with the site plan being finalized, and you could say, you're done, you've met, you've complied, but at that point, if someone came in, you could say, hey, listen, our ordinance requires that there be a buffer yard on here, not a row of stumps, you're going to have to deal with that. It seemed to me, you know, and so we've got, you know, we've got in our ordinance buffer yards, we've got in our, you know, it just seems to me that, it just seems to be a point where you can tell somebody, you're done, you did it.
Yeah, but what if they chose to, like Tom said, just scrape it to the bare earth and let it leave?
They want to gain ground. Some... It would be the same thing as if someone came in and said, well, I don't want to have my building be brick anymore, I'm going to tear it down and put vinyl on it. You know, we have stuff for that, but when the brick was on, you had complied, you were done.
Not necessarily though, because a better example would be if somebody put up a wood sided building downtown, that would be within code. If five years from now they went to put vinyl on it, that would not be, and so, to Bo's point, if we saw that going up, we would be inclined to say, wait, you can't, just because you've occupied this building for five years, you can't go now and create... So, my question, Bo, is, is, what do we need to do to protect ourselves so that...
So, it's always, as I think you were suggesting, it's always easier to go from being the most, to having the most stringent standards, recognizing that there are going to be times when we're not going to hold people to the, to the clear letter of the law on those standards, and when, at some point, there may be an interpretation that has to be made, and of course, that goes to the board adjustment to say, you know, Craig Myrtle for a holly tree, that's within, that's within compliance, you know, a tomato stake in lieu of a holly tree, that's not quite enough.
You know, the thing is, is we already have all of that in the ordinance, it's already in the ordinance for, for our buildings, it's in our building for our standards, and we have, we can go back to that, what we're talking about here, you know, but, but even with those standards, every person comes to a point where they are told, you've complied, you're done. We're not coming to that point with our landscape plan, we're leaving it as an open-ended thing. If somebody comes along and puts a totem pole up or something, obviously, we're going to have, you know, we've already got the mechanism to go deal with that, and so...
This is a part of that mechanism.
This is open-ended though.
I think it's closed, the way I look at it.
It doesn't have any timeline.
Well, it's funny, it's as open-ended as any site plan condition is.
Which runs with land.
Well, one thing...
About the site plan.
Yeah. Marty, we've, I mean, these are, this is an amendment to an existing code that we have, the landscaping code. Is this particular item, is it part of the amendment, or is it part of the longstanding landscape standard?
What the, what the text is showing you is that this maintenance of planting, the reason that it's in green, I'm not mistaken, is it's been moved from another place in the ordinance to this location. Now, there are several subtle changes we've added or designated to the middle of the paragraph there, which is shown in red, and in the last sentence is actually an amendment to this, or an addition to this paragraph, but the, the green language currently exists in the UDO as in this town.
So, it's been existence for a number of years, and it's served its purpose.
So, let me ask this question. My building's 10 years old, stuff's getting big, my wife's a wood sculptorist, I used to own a landscape company, we decide, you know what, we want to change it, and we come in there and tear it all out, and we want to redo it, I have to come and submit a new landscape plan to the town of Louisville?
If you, in fact, I think, did as you explained that you wanted to do, was to change it wholesale, now that you had, using the example of a holly tree...
I'm capable of making sure that it complies, and we're professional, my wife's a professional, so, so we're going to be fine, but why do I have to come to you guys and get permission?
Because of those, those things, that you would do a good job, and it would be correct, and it would be simply a matter of just running it through the processes, it probably wouldn't take that long to get...
Why do I have to go through the process? I pay you a bunch of money every year.
But...
See, I think it's like this though, too, you're a contractor, you're capable of building buildings, if you decided after 15 years, if you didn't like your building anymore, and you wanted to level it, and build something back, you're capable, that's the only...
We are, we are making this standard higher than even what we have for a building, that's what I'm...
Same as the school.
We even did it higher than, but it's open-ended?
That's what, that limits what...
It doesn't mean that it's right, but we have an opportunity to fix it, Tom, right now.
But to my point, if you want...
I'll let it go.
What would you suggest?
What I think you should do is just say, you know, after a period of a year, it's done, you know, the guy has done it, and, you know, every person up and down this road has done their landscaping to our standards, and every one of them is irrigated, which was not even required. At some point, you need to say, hey, well done, you're finished, no worries, that's, that's what I'm asking for. Everybody, you know, Scott Frye and Marty, they come out and check your parking lot, and they make sure your lines are on, and they make sure you've got the right distances, and they measure, Jeff Vaughn does, and he says, you're done, you've complied, you know, and so, we do that with everything else, but this doesn't come to a point where it says, you've complied, it just says, well...
It's, it's, you've maintained, or, or to maintain, is what this...
Do we have other aspects of our site plans that sunset? I'm not aware of that.
Is there, is there a condition of living?
We're dealing with living, and I think that's the essence of what Jeff talked about, I mean, I don't know if there were words for that, never mind, we're done.
No, I'm just saying that at some point, we need to be able to tell people, you've complied, and then we're not.
Well, we do, when we, when they get that, when they get their site plan approval, that suggests they have complied, but that's not the end of the story for plantings, just like it's not the end of the story for maintaining the same building materials and, you know, parking. Marty Springle comes out and says your parking striping is perfect, and it's meaning to make sure you can kind of put, you know, tar over it and not add it there.
No, but he doesn't come back around and tell you that you have to repaint them.
Just look black up there?
Well, it's up to the owner, I mean, you know, he, he doesn't come around and say, hey, you know, your, your parking lines are getting a little faded, I think you need to repaint them. They don't do that, but that's maintenance. I just think that you get to a point where you really need to lead up to the owner. If it gets to be unsightly, we have plenty of things in our ordinance to be able to go after folks and say, hey, you need to get it together. This is just open-ended, where the other stuff is not.
And I understand your, your concern for the language, and I just want to reiterate that we've, we've had really no problem with, with plantings and the maintenance thereof.
Exactly. So then why don't we, why can't we just say, I'm done?
Maybe it's a trick with this paragraph maybe on, but, you know, and one example, which comes to mind, is the Louisville Pharmacy, they built that project and finished it up dead right in the middle of summertime, and, you know, the landscaper, he had to put in those understory little bedding plants because they were needed to get the CO. Well, it wasn't a month later, maybe a month and a half later, they were weathered and dry, just as brittle as could be, they were dead. And it was at that point that it was, I don't know, can't believe I complained or something, somehow or another, it got back to the owner that that was unacceptable, because it's right there on our main, you know, street, and he replaced them. And then I, you know, I can't say that it's due to this paragraph.
That's a different issue.
Let's, I'll tell you what we'll do, let's, if we've got anyone in from the public that wants to interject at this point in time, we'll, we'll finish out the public hearing, and then we'll come back to the council discussion, but I'd like to follow the format if, if at all possible. Is there anyone in, from the public that would like to address council for your viewpoint on the landscaping standards, as has been presented and was continued from the last meeting into tonight's meeting? We will close the public hearing then, and continue council discussion if necessary. Anything else, Chip?
I think we should put something in that says, you know, for a period of one year, end of story.
Comments or discussion points from anyone else on council?
I don't, we don't, we don't cap anything else on site plan with any sort of moratorium. To me, I kind of take the same position on this that I think with the tree ordinance that will come up later, is that if we've got something in place that's pretty much got us where we want to be, and it hasn't been problematic, you know, that's just kind of where I thought, I think that there's going to be some subjective calls, like Bo said, but I just always prefer to have a town in a position to be able to, in a position of strength when it comes to those issues.
My biggest concern is if we, if we allowed this to sunset, then it really doesn't give us any teeth to go back into if there's a problem, I would think, unless I misread it.
I disagree, we have, we have, we've gone after, and we've had people that haven't maintained their properties other places, and we've been able to do something, and they, mostly because they submitted a site plan.
You know, as a compromise to this, I understand we're, we're, Chip, this morning, you know, we've had situations where we've allowed certain things to be a, a minor site change, and allowed staff to make that call without cost, the petition, so, to go to Jeff's example, if we inserted something in here, the Craig Myrtle example, if somebody wanted to do a single tree that came down, they wanted to replace it with a different tree, then I don't know that we necessarily need to make them go through an entire process to go through re-landscaping of their old, but in that case, maybe we have them go to staff and consider that to be a minor, minor site plan adjustment, as long as it doesn't substantially change the overall impact of the site, that might be a compromise that would help. I think in Jeff's example, if somebody wants to level a place and re-landscape it, I think maybe that needs to be a process, but for a couple of trees, or some shrubs or something like that, I wouldn't have a problem if they went to Marty or Hank and said, I'd like, I have two trees, I'd like to do this, and if they're okay with that, they know, they know what our preferred standards are for individual trees and plants and so forth.
And I would be, personally, I would be good with that, because that, that kind of goes from the extreme that we're talking about here to the other, but it does care for somebody goes in and just completely wipes it out, right?
Yeah, if you guys want to do that, that's fine, and, yeah, you're going to create a situation where it's easier to ask forgiveness than permission, that's what I'm concerned about. That's, you know, people who want to make changes to their stuff are already taken care of their own, and so they're the ones that have to jump through the hoops. The person who doesn't want to, they're going to be violating anyway. Basically, the way this is, is if anybody makes any change at any time technically, technically, they're a violation.
I've got some potential suggestive language that we can insert at the appropriate place within that G3 section, and we'd be language along these lines, if you want to consider it. Modifications of landscaping may be approved by staff if the plantings meet the required standards, conundrum without further hearing, that's fine.
Follow along your suggestion, Tom?
Yeah, that's one of the guidelines I was suggesting.
Well, to hit this off the dime, we'll make a motion that we approve the amendments to landscaping standards as presented in ordinance 2013-030, with the added language that our attorney has just stated.
Sure.
Any further discussions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Good evening, ma'am, is that your line?
That was my motion, and seconded by councilman Smith. Okay? So with that, we'll go to the next item.
Next item is also a public hearing to receive comments on UDO L-143, amendments to LD1S, LD2S, downtown overlay or DTO, and permitted use table. First is staff presentations, Mr. Myers.
It's with great relief that the planning board is putting the first portion of the downtown work before you this evening for your consideration. I think you have this on your tablets. What I'm going to do is, we've created a highlight sheet, which I'm going to read from so that the audience will know those areas of the ordinance that have been amended and changed, and you can just follow along with me, if you will. Beginning on page two, the definition section, downtown, or definition of downtown, downtown court area, downtown gateway area, downtown overlay area, is expanded for the purposes of this section, of these amended sections. On pages two through three, the purpose statements have been expanded to include the additional information on LD1 and LD2S. Pages three and four, the pre-application section, had previously been located at the end of the LD1 and LD2, which we always found a little curious, because it's the thing that has to happen first, and it was always at the very end, so if someone were using the ordinance and not reading it all the way through to the end, they might skip that step, and that's a very important part of the whole process. Same pages three and four, document, we renumbered the items as various sections moved around and the various references were changed. On pages four and five, the general dimensional table, LD1S and LD2 dimensional requirements were amended to reflect what is currently happening along Schallford Road and those dimensional requirements that we would expect for the new Great Wagon Road once it's complete. Page six, parking, LD1S was expanded, and new information for LD2S, providing a description of area layout, were provided as it relates to the parking standards. On pages eight through 12, architectural character, these sections were amended quite considerably, after a lot of discussion by members of the planning board, we provided more descriptions of buildings, materials, roofs, facades, facade openings, building orientation, and main entrances, covered walkways, and we put it hopefully in a more logical order. We also then stated that building materials and covered walkways would be adjusted to fit into that new order. Keeping, keeping with architectural character, we've made amendments, amendments to pages 13 and 14 of the new ordinance, we added information on exterior site improvements, building height for LD1S, LD2, we described service utility areas, utilities, color of future buildings, as well as the addressed items involving lighting, sustainability, and future signs. In keeping with that, on page 13, we went and amended the utility section, we removed references based on the complexity of the regulatory code. Where that comes from, we, you may recall that we had a lot of discussion about the hot boxes and vaults that sometimes accompany some of our larger buildings along Schallford Road and potentially even Great Wagon Road. These hot boxes are there to protect the large valves that are needed at the point of connection with the public water line, which is out of the street, these valves then are between the building itself and the public water line, their intention is they're back flow preventers, in that most often times, just like this building here, it has a sprinkler system, with the water up in those pipes, it lays there and becomes stagnant, and these backflow preventors... And these backflow preventers are there to prevent the water in these pipes that are above our heads from flowing back into the public water supply and contaminating, contaminating it in the event of, say, a water break or something somewhere within the town that might create a vacuum or suction. It leaves the waters in these pipes where they belong. The concern was for their appearance, and our third first fault was to put landscaping or something around them in order to properly screen them for view. However, after we consulted the fire marshals to office downtown, Department of Insurance, and a number of other pieces of information, we found that really to do any consequence to screen these things would be in violation of state code in that a lot of these hot boxes have fire connection valves where the fire department will hook up to, to provide and give added support and water flow to the sprinkler system should it have gone off inside the building due to a fire. And they're, they're quite adamant that they not be screened because they want the fire department to be able to find these things in the event of emergency. But what we did do was to say that if at all possible, our preference within the downtown and other areas where these, these vaults might be needed, or these boxes might be needed, our preference would be to put these valves in the ground, in a vault, if at all possible. And given the proper topography and other drainage issues, if that can happen, that would be our preference. If not, then, you know, the hot box, as you see in front of the funeral home, in fact, is a good example, we'd have to go there, but we would not be able to put screening plantings that would get up to any height. We can still continue to screen low, but we can't go high. So that's what that addresses. On pages 15 and 16, we have supplementary district requirements that we've made some adjustments to. We showed the deletion of the pre-application conference so it could be moved to the beginning of the process. There again, that goes back to the comment I made about pre-application being moved. On page 16, Table B.2.5, we amended the table to include downtown overlay, which has never been included in the overlay section of the UDO. For years and years and years, the downtown overlay standards were found in the appendix, and that was somewhat problematic because we had people that go to the MUNICO site or even to our site looking to peruse our UDO, and they wouldn't find it. We have a designated section within UDO which has most of our overlay districts within it, and that one is not. It's in the appendix, so we felt like with this work this evening, that the better place for that would be to move it out of the appendix and bring it up into the regular ordinance where it belongs. On pages 17 through 24, the DTO, there again, we've just moved it. It's in its proper place now within the UDO overlay section, and we also did some tweaking of that to have it conform to the new orientation of the LD1, LD2, so that the two documents read very close to one another and support one another. There again, the implied is if a person has original zoning, did PBLB or whatever, and they don't want to stick a rezoning to LD1, which is our preferred, or LD2, they could work with the original zoning that they have, but the DTO standards would apply, and we felt like it was very important that the DTO standards read much like LD1 and LD2 for ease of use and continuity. On pages 25 through 30, that's the appendix. There again, that's where the DTO was and is no longer. And then the other part of this effort that was taken on by the planning board was to amend and adjust the putt table. We have for a very long time had a number of uses that were allowed previously in LD1 and LD2, but various rezonings and the consideration of those rezonings led us to believe that perhaps some of the uses that we were previously stating in the putt table or the permitted use table were not as appropriate in LD1 and LD2 as we originally thought. So what you have there in that piece of work is a revision showing those uses that have been taken out of either LD1 or LD2, and in some instances, not that many, but there were a couple of instances where we actually added a use to either LD1 or LD2. I think the ATMs, I think comes to mind, is one of the things that we actually add to. We've actually created a new category with the ATMs. We have the walk-up ATM and then we have the drive-through ATM that's standalone, and so we did some adjustments there. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Marty, my, of course, this is, I'm sure, quite confusing to many in our audience, myself included, but would you just maybe, in general terms, state what this is and why we're doing it, why we're making the amendments, how the town's going to benefit from it?
Absolutely. The LD1 and LD2 ordinance, if I'm not mistaken, was originally thought of and approved by the town council, what, 2005? In fact, I think Mr. Zenger's building was the very first building to be approved under it.
2003.
2003. And over the years, our working with it and applying it to the various projects that have come along, along Shalford Road, had indicated to us a need for perhaps some tweaks that were needing to be made, and they were multiple. I mean, there were, sometimes it would be relative to a parking condition or issue and a standard that would be found in LD1, and it just didn't quite apply itself that well to a particular site or project. Sometimes it was the protections that we had in place referring to the actual, the actual character of the building, the architectural character. You know, we thought we might have a prohibition or a restriction or a limitation that we didn't, and so this effort with the planning board as part of our overall visioning or revision of the downtown or updating of the vision of the downtown, basically just adds some, some, some language to what was already there and perhaps in a minor way adjusts some of the existing language so that we feel, you know, that we hope that this, this language, as it's been amended, will take us for another seven or eight-year period before we have to do this again, but we ultimately want it to create a style of development and a quality of development that is in keeping certainly with what we've always seen happen and perhaps even better by some measure.
Thank you for that explanation. Appreciate that. Any other questions of the planner before we open the public hearing?
Marty, we talked the other night about the testing and research lab being dropped out. Is that-
And we're amenable to that. If you would want to put that back into the putt table as part of your consideration of that this evening, we're open to that. We think that's certainly acceptable.
Well, we will open the public hearing on the amendments to UDO L-143, same procedure and rules as for the previous public hearing. If you have any comments or pro or con concerning these amendments, please come to the podium, speak into the microphone, state your name, your address, and again, limit your comments to three minutes, please. May I have anyone at this time that would like to speak to the amendments to this UDO? Okay, we will close the public hearing, and is there any further discussion but council?
I have a couple of questions for Marty. There's a handwritten note on page 23 about drive-throughs in the DTO and the downtown overlay standard that they shall be provided, be allowed as provided under LD1-S. So does that, does that mean that if somebody has, how does that impact LD2?
May I refer to our town attorney because I think that came about as a result of a question we have just presented, Mr. Luther Sogba, about the existing banks, and it brought to light a condition that we felt like perhaps needed to be put back.
Well, I just want to make sure, as for LD2, I don't know whether in, whether downtown overlay covers the LD2 area, and as an oversight, we should include that.
My question there was, you have properties in LD2 that are zone HB that theoretically would not come back in for a rezoning in a given situation, so their drive-throughs for HB would be a different situation than you might see in LD1-S.
That's correct. What I'm saying, you should modify that language so that it says, could apply to LD1-S or LD2-S depending on the location.
Right, and that is because our standards for drive-throughs in LD1-S is more stringent than what you would find typically in HBS, and so that would protect-
And in LD2, it's more stringent than in the street, but also-
Well, we wouldn't allow, there's certain drive-throughs, if we don't allow in LD1, we might allow in 2.
And so, as it sits, it's more stringent than it ought to be because we would allow producer standards-
Our overlay can't supersede zone.
No, it doesn't supersede zone, but it does have additional requirements or restrictions on it, which you might otherwise be able to do, for example, in LD2.
This is allowed, yeah. And then-
We'll make that, that change.
You and I talked, Marty, the last time this came up, talked about possibly requiring a setback envelope on structures between the parallels and also on GWR on the far side of GWR, trying to match the setback that we have on this side of Shalford Road due to problems.
Yes, and we have, what we just presented to you was the ordinance as it was presented, or actually as it was approved by the planning board. What you have in front of you, or sitting have in front of you, is some suggested language which might speak to that. What we've done, and under general dimensional requirements, which is found, it's embedded within the LD1 ordinance that we just covered. What you see there in red is as we just presented to you. There are just a couple of changes or suggested changes in that under GWR, what we found was, in our work, how we came, how we arrived at the 15 feet was we took all of the existing setbacks that are already allowed along this side of Shalford Road, and we measured them to make sure, you know, what, what distance those buildings were, were set back from the roadway, and that's due primarily to the overhead lines. And then we took an average of those distances and came up with the 15 feet. And the suggestion here would be that all buildings along the New Great Wagon Road in order to have some consistency of look or appearance would be set back at that 15 foot versus pull all the way up to Bill 2 line, which is the way that is for the funeral home and the Luswell Pharmacy, so that's your contrast. The other suggestion was under creation of a new note 2, which would read, "On parcels having double frontage on both the Great Wagon Road and Shalford Roads, the area of the parking lot shall only extend toward the rear of the site, a distance equal to the depth of the first building envelope on the site. The undeveloped area," I'm sorry, "the depth of the first building on the site, the undeveloped area remaining at the rear of the property, these shall be reserved as an envelope for future building or buildings to be constructed along the parallel road frontage. This area shall be adequately landscaped to screen the rear of the initial building from GWR until all buildings are complete. At that time, the parking area may be expanded and modified to serve all buildings on the site." What that language basically would create would be a situation where you have for those lots that, only those lots that have double frontage between Shalford Road and the New Great Wagon Road, where you have the first building built, the parking for that first building would only extend back into the lot, a distance equal to the depth of the building itself. Now, that would create an area that would be set aside, that would face the Great Wagon Road, where you would have potentially an envelope or a space for future buildings that would be comparably sized and have similar depth to the one that would face Shalford. Then, if that building or buildings were not built immediately, this standard would say that that area would be landscaped in order to make it more aesthetic, perhaps provide screening as the suggestion in this paragraph, so that folks going up and down the Great Wagon Road wouldn't look directly into a parking lot or into the back of the building that faces the other roadway. Now, at such time as the building does get built or is proposed for construction, then obviously the landscaping would go away, the new buildings would be built, and then the parking lot modified to serve both buildings. It's, it's a way of basically establishing, it's a plan for the mods that the planning board suggested to you when we gave the update back in May, you know, we've shown blocks that have buildings of both size and parking to the middle. This is language that basically just establishes how that might happen for those lots that have double frontage, if you folks like this.
Marty, where did this, where did this language, the planning board come up with this language?
No, this came about actually after the board's consideration.
So where did it come from? Did you write it?
Yes, I did write it. It's, it's actually, like I say, just a mechanism that would allow a developer or someone walking in the door, kind of, how am I going to do this? And this would be, you know, one way to ensure that perhaps if it's, if it's the board's intent and the planning board's intent, as we said, is to have buildings that face both the Great Wagon Road and the Shalford Road, the parking to the middle, this would be the mechanism that they might apply, to have that happen on those lots that have double frontage.
Marty did a nice job of taking that suggestion and putting it into the language because, in fact, what we do downtown is, we have two-phase zoning. When we zone the funeral home, we zone that entire lot, same thing with the pharmacy. And when they come back in the future, if Keith wanted to do a second building, he doesn't have to rezon again, he just has to submit a site plan. So this is, this was very good language, I felt, in trying to address, if you only want to do one building, if that's all you want to do, then fine, you can do that, but then we don't have a wall of parking lots all the way down the backstreet. If you want to, you know, you can, you can build one building, landscape that back and stay that way forever. If in the future you see some advantage to having a second building, you can put up another building, take down that buffer yard and say, those plantings, put your building up, and now you have the model that was originally presented where you have a building on each street with the parking to the center, and that's sort of the concept that we've been shooting for all along. This just kind of helps to make that a set aside so that you don't get one building going up, parking all the way to the end, and that's it.
We've got the ordinance 2013-032, and then we take separately the updated permitted use table, or this all inclusion.
I think your, I think the ordinance is, you haven't done this too. You couldn't conceive if we had been done as one of these, so.
No harm in doing two.
Always, always better to do two, as I was saying. I will say too, the incorporation of the DTO requirements into LD1, LD2 should help us to avoid a situation like we had with the back of the property where there was some confusion as to which set of standards should be applied and how. So that was another good piece of work.
Well, there's been some conflict quite a while between some of the elements of the DTO versus LD1.
Yeah, from right here at the beginning of time, it was hard to understand how that all interconnected, so this helps clear that up quite a bit.
Any other questions or comments from council members? What's your consideration then of ordinance 2013-032?
I'd like to make the motion with the addition of the language that Marty provided for the setback on GWR and the setback between the parallels.
Motion, have a second.
Would you also, I think, Jeff, all the rest recommend that, as everybody says-
So I'd make that motion.
Also, do you want to include the handwritten note as part of your motion?
Yes, with the modification that Bo described for the-
Well, that was the ATM. Also, I mean, drive-throughs.
Yeah, that was in the, the LD1 ordinance, it was on page-
It was included, that's right.
Yeah, I think Bo proposed saying LD1 and LD2-S respectively, depending on which district area.
Further comments or discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? We got that one through? Go to the permitted use table.
Thinking about it, and we approved it, I just would like to see that we just go ahead and put that research lab, and I mean, you're just talking about an office building essentially, and we have a lot of lots that need to be developed, and so if anybody has any objections to it, that's how I'd like to step back in.
I would second that, just based on, we also have, we're certainly attracting a number of medical-oriented businesses to towns, which is a good thing.
Well, and that could, and maybe it could be even engineers do testing and that kind of stuff, so it's a big, it's a big scope of folks, so I think it just needs to be back in there.
High potential. Or high potential. Is that a motion on the second tense, you wrote it? Okay. Added language. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay. And now to UDO L-139. This is the third public hearing this evening, and it is for UDO L 139 tree preservation amendments, and first we will have this stat presentation.
We are running your keep.
This is kind of unusual, and then we actually have two tree ordinances for you to consider this evening, have an A and a B, and I'm going to describe both, and then I'm going to let your call as to which one you folks prefer.
The first...
The first ordinance comes to us as a tree preservation and protection ordinance that was looked at by the planning board, and they had their public hearing on and recommended it favorably to this board. It begins with a purpose statement, which basically says that shall be the intent of this ordinance to preserve existing tree canopy, absorb, the absorption of carbon dioxide and returning oxygen, reduction of soil erosion, and increase of rainfall infiltration, provision of shade, cooling, and reduction of cost of consumption of energy, screen the noise, dust and glare, improvement performance of stormwater management, maintenance, improvement of town's appearances and aesthetics, provide a habitat for wildlife, preservation, protection, enhance the natural environment, and then to protect the, protect and then enhance the property values around the town. It began with, one primary caveat was to require a preliminary site plan of one acre or more submitted to the planning staff that would then be forwarded to the technical review committee and Winston-Salem inspections department for their review and approval. And then it sought the protection of the trees through the implementation of this preliminary site plan as part of the grading, treatment, the grading, disturbance grading, and servicing of the land that would then ultimately happen as a consequence of that preliminary plan being looked at and approved. It did have a number of exemptions within it, which are, I guess, standard exemptions that are found in state statute. That was to, one, existing proposed single-family detached dwellings and two-family dwellings would be exempted from the terms of this specific ordinance. Forestry activity on farmland that is taxed on basis of its present use value, as forest land in Order 12 of Chapter 155 would then exempted as well. Activity that is conducted in accordance with the forest management plan is prepared and approved by a forester registered in accordance with Chapter 89D of the Norcom Journal Statutes, those were things that would not be governed by this statute. Like I say, the primary tenet of this ordinance would have been a tree preservation plan or tree inventory as it was required. The inventory within it, shown the existing canopy on the property that would then be subject to the terms and standards, and another more notable thing that would have perhaps come from this tree inventory would have been a notation of large heritage trees, those trees that have a historical value to the town because of their age, variety, shape, that type of thing. Tree canopy area requirements, as I indicated, would be shown, or be required to be shown by this ordinance, and then a protection plan then would be reviewed and implemented that would essentially attempt to protect 25% of the existing canopy on the lot being proposed for development, and that 25% is kind of the magic number for this ordinance, and that was the amount that we ultimately would have wanted to protect if it were to be approved. There were a number of standards that were put into the ordinance that would have allowed someone and the applicant to know what would be necessary to protect those trees that were designated for protection, and these standards would have followed generally accepted standards for tree protection on construction sites. There was a notation that where the 25% canopy would have been, would have fallen below the 25%, if the canopy had fallen below 25%, the road provisions as to how that might be made up, and the amount of credit that would be given for certain types of trees in order to bring that back up to the magic 25%. One of the things that was found in that section that was kind of notable was that where you had a heritage tree, as we talked about just a little while ago, there would have been an incentive to protect that heritage tree to the extent of 150% of the heritage tree canopy, or tree canopy would be allowed for those heritage trees that had been identified and been shown for protection. There again, the vast majority, it's about 11 pages long, but like I say, most of that were tree planting standards, maintenance standards that would have allowed the applicant and staff to know what exactly needed to be done to enforce this ordinance and protect those trees once they had been identified and shown on the preliminary plan. Toward the end of the ordinance, one of the more notable things was, because this ordinance was not initially, was not, is not founded within the UDO as it now exists, there were a number of terms that were used within this ordinance that were not found, or that are not found, that are existing in UDO, so the last page and a half are definitions that would have then added to the UDO to bring the terms, to define those terms for those that would be using the ordinance in the future in case they had any doubt as to what the term meant, so that was another part of it. Does anyone have any questions about that, or should I move on to B, and then we'll discuss them both? Okay, that's A, and now I'll move along to B. You'll find that it's a lot thinner, there's not 11 pages here of this one. Essentially, what we've established with the B ordinance or the B option is that we would add specifically to Chapter C of the UDO, the environmental ordinance section, under 4-5, general requirements, a new paragraph, actually paragraphs, that would follow under Section 5-4-5.2, denial or approval prior to tree harvesting. And what we've done is we've taken the purpose statement from A, and we've included that in this section as a paragraph A, and it reads, just as I read for you just a little while ago from the other ordinance, "The purpose and the goal of this section is to reduce tree canopy loss and to promote tree protection." And then we identify those items one through eight, which would be the benefits of protecting trees within the community. Paragraph B is probably the more important of the two paragraphs, and that's the enforcement paragraph. And basically what paragraph B says is that, "For an existing development, a single-family detached dwelling on its own lot and an attached dwelling unit which possesses an individually separated driveway or garage pursuant to NCGS Section 168, 458, dash point five C of the town through the zoning officer designated may deny building permit or refuse to approve the site or subdivision plan for a period of three years." What this is speaking to is if a person or persons were to come in and willfully and knowingly timber a piece of property prior to, in anticipation of, the development of that property as a subdivision or a commercial site or the like, the town has in its option the ability to deny or withdraw or withhold, rather than a better word, a permit or approval for the development of that property for a period of up to three years, and perhaps as many as five years, depending on the exact conditions and the situation, although in all situations are different. But we're hopeful that, and it's our fault, that the reason that that paragraph is important is that we want to make sure that persons do not take advantage of a situation where they have an existing canopy or tree line that they then timber and then have a development come along behind it, which actually has no tree canopy or no trees whatsoever to speak of, which we believe, as we've said in our purpose statement, add value to the project. That's not to say that the exemptions that I mentioned to you before, if you have a piece of property that's currently being, it's in the forest program, you know, a forester has established that there's a management plan involved, you can, you know, you can continue to timber those properties, this paragraph doesn't impact that. In fact, those situations I've indicated in the other ordinance are still exempted. But it's those situations where we want to see a development come along, and we understand, and we say in our first purpose statement that it's, that there is a value in those large canopy trees, and it's incumbent upon the developer to realize that through our purpose statement and our following paragraph, that they not do that to any great extent. Now, we understand that there's some trees that, in any piece of property, that may be diseased, dying, or just unsuitable to be kept, and we're all for, you know, taking those out for public safety reasons, but the wholesale going in there and timbering a piece of property from property line, property line, and then coming back with some development, I think it just decreases or diminishes the quality of the development which comes along behind it. And so, that's the B option, as we proposed it to you this evening, so, yeah, that's it. There's no, make sure there's no other conditions or terms that I haven't mentioned to you, but I'd be open to answer or address, help in any way I can, any questions you might have.
Now, I think the B option came along primarily from input from council.
Correct. And you recall that that language was previously found in the landscaping standards, and that was thought to be kind of problematic, because that's not where someone's going to go to, to, or where they would even think to find that language. The reason that we dropped it into paragraph 4-5.2 where we did is because this is right smack dab in the middle of the environmental section, where someone's going to be working, if they're going to be doing a project to be a commercial, a commercial subdivision or a business park, or even a residential subdivision, they're going to be looking in this section for what they need to do to comply with the erosion control and stormwater. And so, it seemed to us that that was a good place to go ahead and put that in there prior to them getting to the actual erosion control and stormwater standards, so that they know it's got to be a big part of what they have to go by.
Well, my question actually is concerning, I guess, the timing aspect. This did come about from input from council. Have you been able to circulate this back through the planning board for their least information and...
We have, it wasn't at their last meeting, but the meeting prior to that where we did, we did take this up, and we made them aware of the conversations that you folks were having, that we were aware of, and we mentioned it to them, so that they would be aware of it as well.
No resignation, I hope. Very good. Any questions or comments from council to the planner on his presentation? We will go into our, open the public hearing, see if there's comments from our audience. Thank you, Marty. Well, it is that opportunity for anyone in the audience, we will open the public hearing on the UDO L 139 tree preservation amendments, and if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to council, pro, or con, please do so at this time. As before, just come to the podium, state your name and your address, and let in your comments in three minutes, please. Have anyone that's interested in presenting to council at this time? Having no takers, well, we'll close the public hearing and go to council discussion on, I guess it's Amendment A or Amendment B.
Make a motion to approve Amendment B.
Any comments? Further discussion?
I think Amendment B is what we started with some time ago, as far as desire to have something that would be a clear cut, and we turned it around and, and...
It's a little cleaner.
It's a little cleaner, much cleaner, to say the least.
Further comments? We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Amendment B is... Brings us to the next public hearing, and the last one for the ninth.
There's still no tires or feathers, so you're doing good.
Three, one, nine. Okay, number four, or letter D as it's in your agenda, is the public hearing to receive comments on allowing dogs in Jack Warren Park. I guess presentation-wise, there's not much to say. Mayor, you want to give some words?
Well, I think, as I tried to explain to a fourth grade AG class at Lewisville Elementary about this issue, there is, currently in Jack Warren Park, we, the town does not allow pets, and there has been discussion and a support by some in the community to change that, to at least allow dogs on a leash, on the walking trail. And so, I think this captures most of it, that it's not all. That would be the issue before us, so, does any council member want to make a comment or bring up any discussion points before we go to the public hearing?
All right, well, we will open the public hearing, allowing our people in the audience to present to the council their pro or con feelings. We have had several sign up for this, so I'll just go right down the list for the comments of the individuals. We ask again that you come to the podium, state your name and your address, and let in your comments in three minutes, if you would, please. And first, I have Ivan Hall.
Ivan Hall, Chairman of Lewisville Refinification Committee, and making a few comments about Jack Warren Park, it's a wonderful place.
Who has your address for the record?
713 Lewisville Quilvers Road. Jack Warren Park's a wonderful place for people of all ages, if you want to relax, take a stroll, and just enjoy the quietness of nature. Now, the issue of allowing dogs to share the walking trail has come up again, to which I am opposed, even though I own two dogs. People are not obeying the rules posted in the park now, and some are bringing their dogs in and not disposing of the waste. I am at the park working every week and have on occasion removed all waste from the walking trail, and have been lunged at by a black lab, which the owner could hardly contain, at which time the parents rush to the children on the playground. As we know, not all dogs are people-friendly. As far as people being responsible, some yes, most no. I see that every day as I walk my dogs in the neighborhood. No one else carries a bag to remove the dog's waste, nor do they when walking them along Shallowford Road. If they will not carry a plastic bag, they will not use the dispensers located in the park. They could also be a problem of allowing their dog to party in the open fields where children often play and let their dogs run free, especially if there is no supervision. It was mentioned at another meeting that tobacco deal allows dogs in their park without any problems, but the key word is, they have someone on duty to make sure the rules are being followed. I have deep concerns for the safety of the children, the mothers pushing their child in a stroll, and the dad with his handicapped daughter in a wheelchair, and for the elderly walking daily. There are more families enjoying the park now, so I think we should keep the park for people than... Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Beth Howe.
My name is Beth Howe, I live at 441 Roller Mill Drive, and since it's the fourth time I've addressed you, I think you kind of know where I stand on this issue, so I won't bore you, I won't repeat myself. My notes are in last month's minutes, if you want to read them. I'll just say that in order to maintain the beauty of the park, and if you are in charge of that stuff, I want you to come to my yard, it's fantastic, it looks great out there, and because there's so many other options close by for people who want to walk their dogs, I ask that Jack Warren Park remain dog-free. Thanks. Thanks.
Mr. Wayne Hall.
My name is Wayne Hall, ten oh eight Auburn Run Drive, Russell. I'm here as a representative of the Parks and Recreation Committee. At our October meeting, we reaffirmed our position to allowing dogs at Jack Warren Park. We feel it kind of goes against Ms. Warren's wishes for a passive park. We think there'll be added expense for the town who will end up leasing the park for that purpose. And we also think it might be a plus for us to have a park that is dog free. I mean, there are plenty of other parks for people to go to that allow dogs. So we would like to see it remain as it is now.
Mr. Shelton, Shelton Bearfoot.
My name is Shelton Bearfoot. I live at thirteen eighty Lazler Road in Lewisville. And it's good to see all of you here, but the dogs in Jack Warren Park, I think is wrong. I think we talked about that in the park bill, I think we brought it out at that time, and I still support that. And I'd like to echo everything that the previous ladies have said on that.
Mr. Robert.
Oh, I'm good. My name is Bob Bogdan. I live at one 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 nine Els Barley in Lewisville. And I guess everybody else has already pretty much stated the same feelings that I have. Thank you very much.
Mr. Susan Linker.
My name is Susan Linker. I live at eighteen fourteen Reynolds Road, and I'm a member of the Beautification Committee. I've done a good bit of work down at the park. And my observation is that the principal problem is that the fact that the walking trails are so narrow, they're good for walking, but if you have a dog that's coming from one direction, if you have particularly young children that are coming from the other, even if you keep a leash, it's really hard, I think, to try to guarantee that that dog will not cross over and trouble somebody in one way or another. Another concern that I have is that we've been seeing when we're working down there, we see families with young children that are coming in with small bicycles, with these little scooters, I like to use those also down there. And there's something about a wheel. I don't know what it is. Our daughter, when she was younger, many years ago, got bitten when she was riding her bicycle. And I think it was the wheel that excited the dog. And so what concerns me is that if you have children that are using these wheeled vehicles down there, it could excite a dog that wouldn't normally trouble anybody. And it's very hard, I think. We will also, at Tamwood Park, where they have wider trails, and even at that park there, you see people with, when they have them on extended leash, they'll just come right into the path of other people that are walking from other directions. So I'm hoping that children will keep the dog free. Thank you.
Thank you. That exhausts the list of those that have signed up to speak prior to the meeting. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address council? Yes, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I had not wanted to address, my name is Robert Rumeno. I live at fifteen hundred Robin Hood Trans Court in Baton. And I had not planned on addressing council. But having heard the comments I heard before, I thought it'd be my public duty to at least give you my opinion. And I have a dog. I was a dog lover until I had this little dog, a good friend of mine, and loved to walk him. We take him down to Money Creek where there are a lot of dogs that he walks, among runners and among bicyclists. And the people there are typically good people. They take care of their dogs. When I say take care of them, they keep them on leash, they have a bag for trash, they pick up after their dogs. I have not ever seen, in all the times I've been down there, a dog attack anybody, whether a runner, a skater, a bicyclist. As far as taking care of the dirt or the waste from the dogs, I think it's the owner's responsibility to make sure that they pick up after the dog. I take my dog to Jack Warren Park. I probably shouldn't admit that, but I do. I have it on occasion. I don't take him down to the walking trail. I take him up to the fields where there's a lot of area to run around. Loves it up there. I'm a dog lover. I have not heard any opinion yet from any dog lover to allow dogs at Jack Warren Park. It's a great place. It's here in Lewisville. I don't know of any other place in Lewisville directed my dog. I wanted to thank you for your time and your consideration.
My name is Ed Sessom. I live at one fifteen Ridgeberry Court here in Lewisville, and I rise and support dogs. I don't know if there's ever been a survey of the usage of Jack Warren Park or not. These ladies who work with the Beautification Committee seem to see an awful lot of activity in there. When this paper was published, this issue would be presented in this hearing, I decided to do my own survey of Jack Warren Park. For the last two weeks I've been in the park, most days, twice a day, some days, just once a day. The only time I've even seen any significant activity in the park was on a Sunday when I saw eight people at the playground area. I saw a family, pretty big family of four, sitting on the grass and talking. And I also saw a truck that was parked, and I presumed the person in the truck was sleeping because his feet were up on the dashboard. I've seen some other activities in the park, but very limited during the course of the last two weeks. Now, I know there's a playing field at the entrance of the park. To my knowledge, that playing field has never been utilized for anything. I know there are, what did they, latte courts or horseshoe courts or something like that. I walked up there and they don't appear to be used at all. I did look in the trash can even at that point, and I see some lunch bags from some fast food restaurants. So I know some people go up there and maybe have their lunch. But I don't believe the park, the passive nature of the park appeals to a broader spectrum, broader than a spectrum of the community. You've got people who like to walk. You've got people who like to sit and commune with nature. You've got kids who like to play at the playground. And now, the argument's been made that there are plenty of other places in the community to walk dogs and to, and plenty of dog parks close by. There are also plenty of places in the community for playgrounds and for people to commune with nature. So I don't think that argument holds any more. So I support leash walking of dogs in Jack Warren Park. I think most dog owners are responsible, contrary to what some of these people have said. I know I am, and the gentleman that's above me obviously is, and people in my neighborhood are. I care to see bags carried with them when I walk my dog every day. So I ask for consideration for allowing dogs in the park, leash walking.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to address council? We will close the public hearing on allowing dogs at Jack Warren Park and go to council discussion.
I guess I'll head out. Excuse me. I have, I've probably gotten to this point tonight to have a formal public hearing on this issue. I've been patiently, well, I guess it's retreat a year before, but not this year, but you last year asked for this discussion, so we could have received public input. I've got my own personal feelings. I know other council members has their own personal feelings. And this is about to put off on our Parks and Recreation Board, but I think that this is a decision that our council should make at this level. And then once it has been made, however it turns out, then from the, excuse me, from that point forward, we now have something that's been council approved, not just Parks and Recreation Board approved, if you will. Personally, my thoughts on it is that much reflected the last two speakers, I think most dog owners are responsible under that environment. We did ask the town manager to discuss this issue with the folks at Tobaccoville to get their feedback because of, you know, experience there. I think it's a little bit misconstrued that they have somebody that monitors the park at all times. They have a public works employee that maintains the park, but maybe not necessarily there all the times to, to enforce the situations. Again, I want to thank each of you that came to the public hearing tonight and expressed your concerns one way or the other, your support one way or the other. If I'm not out of line, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we change the rules to allow dogs on leash on walking trails at Jack Warren Park.
I think you're within your rights to make that motion at this time. We'll always come back for public discussion from others. Do we have a second?
I'm going to make a second just in the interest of allowing for some additional discussion.
All right. We do have a motion and a second to allow dogs at Jack Warren Park. Further discussion from council?
What I find interesting about this is when we did the design for Jack Warren Park, there was an extensive process involved, many hours of community input, Parks and Recreation and so forth. Dog park was part of that. So was the frisbee golf spray park. There were a number of other elements that were listed. Of course, as the case with many things, money comes down to the determining factor. So a number of those things were moved to phase two. We basically broke the elements into a couple of phases, put what we could afford in phase one, and moved the others into a future phase of two. At that time, the input was highly favorable for those elements, the dog park included. We're hearing something a little different now. I don't know that the, you know, I don't know that the fact indicates a major shift in the community. We certainly haven't had any sort of major charrette or, you know, opportunity for significant public input since that time. I suspect like a lot of things, same situation comes up when we talk about greenways. There's certain things that people will say in each case. In the case of greenways, I'll say it's going to be higher crime, it's going to reduce my property values, it's going to, things like that. And the empirical evidence doesn't typically support it. I don't know that there would be, I don't know that I've tried to do some research on it, you know, as far as trying to determine how many people have been injured in dog attacks in parks where dogs are allowed. I don't really find substantial numbers. It seems like you run a bigger risk being in a park with a male between the ages of eighteen and twenty-seven than you do being in a park with a dog. But, you know, I think at some point, we clearly have some issues, and these come up. Typically, we have parks, whether it's a square or this one, we don't want skateboarders, we don't want dogs. There's certain things that immediately, there are groups of people who oppose. And whether or not we do this tonight, I really think at some point we need to think about the people who do skateboard, the people who do want to have a place to take their dogs, the people who do those other kinds of activities. You know, I think we owe that some consideration. I haven't seen a huge public outcry either way for this prior to us bringing this up. We didn't have any sort of petition or anything like that. And I know that historically, on matters like this, if we don't get, you know, something like that, then our typical position has been, well, if it is a broke, why fix it? Type of thing. But I think at the very least Fred raises a good point. Something else that came up in the context of this whole park, we talked a lot about what hours it should be, and we didn't want people down there after dark. And we didn't want, you know, my question at that time was, you know, we couldn't all have been born fifty years old. You know, when I was eighteen, nineteen, twenty years old, you took the dog to the park, you hung out at dark, you know, and I know times change, but I hope that we don't become walled off to the possibility that we do have substantial numbers of people who engage in various activities in Lewisville. I think we need to try to accommodate everyone. And as the gentleman said, we currently don't allow it at the square. We don't allow Jack Warren. I would be curious if we ever had a third park, what the discussion would be.
Well, there is another park. Johnny Moser Park allows dogs to be walked in that park. I go to the Jack Warren maybe not as often as the gentleman back there does. About three weeks ago, that field was completely covered with little boys from a football team playing tag football, I guess. Park was pretty full as far as that field being utilized. Now, down at the walking trails, there wasn't that many people. And I don't know what days you go and what hours you go or whatever. But, you know, there is a lot of children that go there. The school takes school kids over there for classes. Park and Rex has done a lot of work out there, and they maintain a pretty decent park. And I'd like to see it kept that way. Nothing against dogs personally, but, you know, the lady that donated that land, which she has nothing to do with now, but she really didn't want dogs in that park, but her hands are tied and she's out of it. But, you know, again, Johnny Moser Park does allow you to walk your dogs in there, and there is a park. But I'm going to side with Park and Rex's decision. I'm not for dogs in the park.
Have you been aware of any issues with Johnny Moser regarding dogs? Have you been, never heard of anything?
Never heard of anybody saying.
There's been a problem with it or?
No.
Did you leave a parking, anything like that?
That park is liable for dogs. But no, I've not heard.
I've been down it often. I wonder if you were there, if you'd ever seen a lot of residue or people in, in trouble with the dogs?
I'm very seldom there. I go to Jack Warren.
When this subject came up, I made the recommendation, along with the Tobaccoville Park, that Johnny Moser be looked at, and we did not get a ready study result of Johnny Moser Park.
Further discussion?
I just wanted to say that, you know, I think we've all talked a lot about this over the last few months or so, but, you know, I think Tom raised some good points, as Fred did and others. But, you know, I think, I mean, I think what probably, let me say this so I can get it out there. I've had a dog, I'm sixty years old, I had a dog when I was three, and lost my last one last August. So there's no question about my love for animals, so. But having said that, you know, sitting here as a council member for this town, I keep thinking about what Tom was alluding to, and that is, we always have to be mindful of what everybody needs as best we can. We have to care for that in some way. We're not always going to make the right decisions, but we have to make the best decision we think is in the best interest of most people. Having said that, I did take the opportunity to go. I've been out to Jack Warren a number of times, and it is a very beautiful park. I have been over to Johnny Moser, which is actually owned by Forside County Parks and Rec, not the town of Lewisville. We've been there for a number of events, including when my children were young, that have picnics and ball game events and things like that. But I also had an opportunity recently, which I had not, I've been here twenty-five years, and I had not been up to Seagill, Seagill Park. For those that are not familiar with it, it's out near Reagan High School off of Boston. And I will tell you, when we came here many years ago, that park was very small, had a lake, very limited walking trails, and it's amazing to me what they've done over the last year. I hadn't been there in a long time, and I actually took our youngest daughter and son-in-law's dog up there. And I will tell you, it was a beautiful place. They have a lot of nice facilities that got trash facilities up through the park, but it literally goes for miles in different directions. And then we also have, somebody mentioned the Greenway at Money Creek. That's another venue for folks to take a dog to. My point is, is when I look around... My point is, is when I look around the immediate area, we've got outlets for folks that want to walk a dog. And I think in regards to Jack Warren, it seems to be the one place where we don't have animals right now. And I personally would have to say I want to keep it that way, to make sure that we do fulfill those needs of folks that want to keep it in that regard.
Any other comments, questions, discussion?
I wonder if we could, we've talked about the possibility of having, you know, we've talked about the survey at some point in time, and part of what I was alluding to is, if we have that survey, and certainly it would appear prior to any sort of movement on phase two to this park, I think it would be important at very least to have questions related to this as part of that survey. And number two, I think we need to have Parks and Rec, maybe at some point, if not to just a future review, exactly what we've got on tap for phase two of Jack Warren, and see if there's been some shift. We certainly don't want to be unprepared in the future, and I think that having a broader dialogue at the very least is going to be important, because there are some varying viewpoints here. And that's why I'm glad Fred brought this up, because there really hasn't been any discussion about this since the park's been constructed. And, you know, we are looking at potentially an entire new series of additional amenities to that park at some point.
Well, you know, we ask people to serve on boards, and we have these boards. We have the rec board, we have the park board, we have the planning board. And they serve on, and they do a tremendous amount of time that they put in there. And, you know, we ask people to serve on these boards, they come back with their suggestions, and we usually accept them. I'm saying, if we're going to have these boards, and they make these suggestions, they put a lot of time in, we should consider that without question, every little bitty thing that they put. So if we're going to nitpick every time a committee says something, we come back and say, we don't like that, boy, you got that flyer down there. And that's what we're getting at. That's what we're doing right now, we're nitpicking. Then, oh, we dissolve every committee that.
I don't, I don't think that's the case.
You don't see that?
I don't. I'm saying, we have a, we have a Parks and Rec board who put together the plan for Jack Warren Park.
Okay, yeah, that's what they've done.
And they did that with the citizens groups, and they did charrettes, and they got input. Their recommendation was different than what we're hearing now from Parks and Rec. That was our sitting Parks and Rec board at that time that recommended those phases in parks, or I'm suggesting that it appears like there's possibly been a shift in opinion. I'm curious to see if that shift also translates into the public's opinion, nearing the opinion of our current board. Our boards and committees do great work, but in the end, they make recommendations, and it's our job to make sure that those recommendations are consistent with the best interests and desires of the community. That's why their votes are recommendations, and the elected body makes the final decision, because we're placed here by the citizens to take care of their interests. We use the opinions of our boards and committees to help us formulate the best decision we can make as a group of seven.
How long have you been on the board, average, years?
I've been on for five years.
Okay.
And then a career.
Well, I think what you're talking about, it's not that, you're talking, you're talking two different things. You're talking dog park versus dogs on a leash. Dog park is what may be offered in phase two according to years ago. What they're currently talking about is dogs on leash. You're talking two separate things. You're talking a very controlled environment to a little more loosey-goosey, you're dependent upon that owner, on that leash.
Maybe now, though, that there may not be a desire to even have a dog park.
Exactly.
So I would be curious to see, prior to moving into phase, I mean, maybe the people don't want frisbee golf anymore. I don't know, but I would suggest that, you know, at some point prior to any of that being done, it might not be a bad idea to have our Parks and Rec board review and see, because if this, if this has shifted, possibly a number of those elements, there might be a difference, given that the time has been elapsed, lasses between the phases. I think before we could spend that money, it would be, do as well to have them go out and do a similar process to kind of re-gauge where we're at in the community. They did a good job last time. I think that, just like we have surveys, we redo them over time, and we redo our comp plan over time. Things change. People change. So capturing that, I think, would be important prior to spending another million dollars on a cap project.
Well, I think, you know, thinking back and being involved with the design of Jack Warren Park initially, one thing, I think the Parks and Rec board has certainly been consistent with the particular issue of desert. From the very beginning, they were recommending against that, and they've now fallen away up until today. The other elements that have been considered for the park, basically, we were constrained by our amount of land that we have available. And so a phase two, you know, still is on the drawing board, so to speak, but it has certainly been tabled for a period of time until the property was available to add additional features. And I think the reason why we have the current design is it was the best fit for the land that we had and ownership to sort of love that. We've got a motion to allow dogs in the park, and we've got a second to that.
Any further discussion?
I'd like to thank, this is great to see people coming out like this. It doesn't happen to enough folks, really getting direct input and being able to hear from people directly. It's amazing how many nights we come in here, it's us and the reporters and staff, and so it gets refreshing to get some actual interest in the topic and be able to talk to someone. So thank you very much.
It was very, very good to hear from the public, hear from those of you that are involved in many aspects, and certainly to get your opinion and ideas on this particular issue, as well as other things. We have the motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, the black side. It's six one. Opposed. So for the time being, please, we'll put that one to rest.
Next town? Okay. Under unfinished business, there is none listed for this evening.
Moving on to new business, we have resolution two zero one three zero three five, accepting the declaration of withdrawal of road dedication for a strip, for the strip of land off Kelwyn And ask our attorney to talk on this resolution.
This one we have discussed to some extent. The declaration of road withdrawal has been prepared and executed. It's ready. What's before you tonight is the resolution, simply indicating that the town does not have this property on any street or thoroughfare plan. That's pretty much the essence of it, the resolution, if adopted, but how it will be attached to the declaration of road withdrawal and recorded so that the landowner then can have the property divided amongst, there are two of them, one on each side. Hubbard Realty of Winston-Salem has already, frankly, already executed the deed in anticipation of this, but they're not going to report it conveying property to donors.
So there's really no detriment to the town as far as that goes?
Well, in this particular instance, there was a way for a connecting sub-street, but the adjoining subdivision developed such that there's a house that you have to go through in order to actually build the road.
Any questions of the attorney concerning this resolution?
Question through the roof.
All right. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
President passes, withdrawing the road dedication.
And next town.
Okay, the next brings us to administrative reports. A under that is upcoming events, Shalford Square and town holidays. This Saturday, the sixteenth, we are going to have our Fall Recycle Day, and this is hosted by the Recycling Committee. It will be at Jack, I'm sorry, Shalford Square. Noting, also, what's that?
You sure it's about Jack?
Yes, I think we've had Jack Warren Park on the brain for a while now.
Because we can talk about that. They're giving free radio shots of Jack Warren Park.
And moving forward. On the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, we will be observing holiday closings at Town Hall for in observance of Thanksgiving. Moving forward, on the sixth of December, the tree lighting will be happening at Shalford Square, and this is again hosted by the City Club and the town of Louisville. And then on the eighth of December, of course, is the annual Christmas parade put on by the City Club. And then lastly in the list, we would recognize closings of town on December twenty-fourth and December twenty-fifth, in recognition of the Christmas Eve and Christmas Day closings
Questions of the manager concerning the administrative reports? We'll go to the next order of business, and that is for the good of the order. What else? The second.
Sorry, we do have one more, one more last item on this, this is B and Reports. Just as a matter of announcement, the Louisville Beautification Committee will be conducting their Holiday Lights Ride Along, and that will be Monday, December ninth of this year at seven o'clock P.M.
And as a result of that, the Beautification Committee picks the decorations and they so noted in both our newsletter as well as Channel Six.
That's correct. Sorry, I jumped ahead.
It's okay.
All righty. This does bring us now to the second opportunity for the public to speak to council. This is under the same format as what we've used previously. Anyone that wants to address council must come forward to the podium and state your quantity of name and address, and then limit your comments to three minutes. Will have anyone that's interested in addressing council at this point in time? Having none, we will close the public comment and remind the public that we do have farms available for rent. Brings us to council comments for tonight's session. Any name from council members?
Us? We'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I would.
Right?
Thank you.
And have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the black side. Okay. We are adjourned. Thank you for your attendance.